Good evening and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission Meeting. Tonight is Thursday, March 21st, four at 6:00 P. M. We'd like to start off with a prayer by Pastor Craig Bush of Grace Baptist Church.
And let's pray. Father, thank you for the day. Thank you for the opportunity to be together to do business. The Lord help us all to realize we're all sinners, sinful flesh. Help us not to do things in the pride of our flesh. Help us to realize we're accountable to you for how we use our leadership. One day will stand before you. Help us to do things based on truth and right, not on our pride please. In Jesus' name, amen.
If you could remain standing to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the God that governs this nation under God, indivisible, with the reprieve of justice.
If you could remain standing for the West Virginia pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Allegations to the flag of West Virginia, which serves as a constant reminder that mountains are always free, which stands as a symbol of her majestic mountains, fertile forests, rich veins of coal, and the pride of the people.
All right, March 7th, 2024, regular meeting. Are there any objections to the minutes?
March 7th, there's, that needs to be a correction. Let me get this all adjusted there. I have to be really close. The March 7th minutes, page nine, item C, about the middle of the page. I just think a spell check thing messed up. It was the consensus decision by the commission. I think it should be, and it says the conscious decision. So.
Thank you for catching that.
All right. Any other changes? All right, hearing none. If there are no more objections with that change, March 7th, 2024, minutes are approved. March 12th, 2024, budget deliberations. There are no objections. That is approved. March 14th, 2024, budget deliberations, minutes. Here are no objections. That is approved. Requisition's March 21st, 2024, an amount of $7,962.8. If there are no objections, that is approved. For accounts payable, March 14th, 2024, an amount of $409,710.5. If there are no objections, that is approved for March 21st, 2024, an amount of $2,292.60. If there are no objections, that is approved. For approval of manual checks from March 15th, 2024, an amount of $132,238.62. If there are no objections, that is approved for March 22nd, 2024, an amount of $187,193.86. If there are no objections, that is approved. For payroll, March 15th, 2024, an amount of $318,404.80. If there are no objections, that is approved for March 15th, 2024, for special payroll, an amount of $1,255.8. If there are no objections, that is approved. Are there any announcements? All right. Moving on, we have a few people signed up for public comment. We'll try to knock those out before we go into the public hearing for the budget. And moving on to agenda number one, we do have three public hearings tonight. I will ask you to keep your comments respectful, not tax, staff, or commission. That will be your only warning that I'll give tonight. We'll start off with, this is for the public comment period, starting off with Doug Rockwell.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Hang on, I do want to set my timer for you. So make sure you get your own two minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In the absence of corruption or fraud, an individual commissioner in the performance of his duties is immune from liability unless his acts or omissions were with malicious purpose, in bad faith, or in a want or reckless manner. With respect to your acts and omissions regarding section 8.20 of the zoning ordinance, what would a jury find? In addition to compensatory damages, would punitive damages be awarded? Each of you knew, any text amendment to the zoning ordinance must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. You knew the relationship of recommendations and goals as described in the plan. Three of you voted to approve the agreed order dated March 31, '22, which set forth paragraph 5B of the agriculture and rural economy recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Paragraph 5B would require a solar energy facility to satisfy three requirements set forth therein before it could receive a CUP in the rural zone. In May of '22, you voted to adopt section 8.20 without the requirements set forth in paragraph 5B. This act is evidence of bad faith. The suit was filed against county commission, planning commission, and BZA challenging the adoption of section 8.20, seeking a temporary restraining order and other relief. In the July 2022 order, all the county entities agreed, and the court found that when considering the application for a CUP under section 6.3, as to the compatibility with the goals of the comprehensive plan, the BZA shall do so in conjunction with the recommendations. Read together, these orders reinforce the importance of the omission of paragraph 5B requirements from section 8.20. This major significance of the act of bad faith is shown. From July 22 to September 23, September 7th, in exact, approximately 26 meetings of the commission were held, at which no agenda item appeared for public discussion or vote to correct the deficiencies in section 8.20. Mr. President, you had a responsibility to place this item on the meeting agenda. Individual members also failed to request that this be placed on the meeting agenda. These omissions constitute additional evidence of bad faith. On December 21, '23, three of you annulled the vote of September 7th to rescind section 8.20, thereby reinstating the defective section. You also requested the planning commission to edit.
If you could finish up, I would appreciate it.
Why? I'm sorry?
V., finish your sentence.
I am. I have three lines.
Sir, your time's up.
You know, Mr. Stalper has a history with solar amendments, and he and his sidekicks on the planning commission created the defective section 8.20. Why would you expect them to take any corrective action? In fact, ninety days have passed.
Your time is up. I gave you extra time.
What have you heard from the planning commission?
Bail. Please, thank you.
I will submit additional comments. I will submit additional comments. I'm okay.
Oh, my goodness.
I am. I'm going to submit additional comments by email to you all.
Next, we have Ms. Jennifer King.
Good gracious. Where do we live? I thought this was America, really. Didn't you?
These are the orders that I mentioned in my presentation. I was giving copies to the party. In case you all want to look at them, press your right selection.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwell.
Yes, ma'am. If you could state your name and address.
Jennifer King, Charlestown. I haven't been in front of this commission for about four years. When the commission ignored the pleas of citizens concerned about their water, industry, growth, and environment, I see you all are still ignoring citizens. I haven't been a fan of this commission for many years. I'm independent who voted for Trump in 2016, and I have the ability to recognize and admit when I'm wrong. I'm against unplanned growth, solar farms that don't benefit West Virginia citizens, heavy industry, and all those things that have been continually ignored and allowed to run amok in this county. The list is long. You all are literally not doing your jobs. You didn't show up for meetings, crippled Jefferson County business, and still collected your paychecks. You were derelict of your duty, AWOL. There's nothing to be proud of. You all can't get along and are squaddling like schoolchildren. Good governing is about working tough situations out, compromising, and being able to work with people with opposing ideals. You're supposed to be on the same political side, but more importantly, first and foremost, you're supposed to be on Jefferson County's side.
I am.
So what if Staliver is a dictator with conflicts of interest? Not saying you are. There's still always ways to get things done with dictators. Actually, this whole commission, as a whole, has been a dictatorship because it hasn't listened to the will of the people. You have people from all parties basically wanting the same things, and you all are ignoring them. I didn't think it was possible that the commission could be worse than it was four years ago, but here we are. Work on improving our outdated, broken infrastructure. Stop the industrialization, urbanization. Get an updated water study done. And for God's sake, stop acting like children. Work out your differences and start actually listening to your citizens' valid concerns and properly govern this county.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jackie Miller.
I'm going to talk on the budget hearing later, but on day three of the budget session, a citizen found over $1 million that was not counted as revenue. My question to this commission is if that money had not been identified as a part of the budget, where would it have gone? It was suggested staff transition and turnovers was to blame. I do not agree. I find it difficult to believe that a finance director or associated administration is allowed to act in silos. If so, the JCC needs to change its ways to provide gap protection through instituting continuity in government measures in critical finance administration positions. The taxes and fees that government collects must be clearly and concisely accounted for. That said, I am requesting a separate clear and accounting for public review of ARPA COVID and EMS transfer money funds. I am also requesting an audit. During the last budget session, it was noted that by officials that, again, there has been a high internal turnover in staff. Since the onset of this budget session, there has been swirling reports of significant deficits and surpluses. Therefore, as a taxpayer, voter, and resident of this county, I am requesting an outside independent audit for at least the last four years as modeled by the Securities Exchange Commission. The auditor should not have any direct material indirect business relationship with the fund, its management, or affiliates. Planning commission bylaws. The commission should consider requiring a revision date to be placed within the bylaw document for easy reference. Section 2.4 of committees, the commission should consider requiring that the word "public" be placed before the word "notice," beginning at the second paragraph, should begin "public notice." How would the public know if only committee members are noticed? Additionally, where will the public notice be placed? The proposed bylaws indicate that the committees are said to be fact-finding in nature. Therefore, all materials and information should be subject to public inspection. Section 4.1, regular meetings of the bylaws. Since the proposed bylaw suggests that the president can call 100% audiovisual technology meeting, the commission should verify that all applicants can meet that threshold of technology without limiting opportunity to serve. Under the BZA planning commission public comment, this commission should be made aware that several boards and commissions in the county are limiting the public's access to information by not providing reasonable deadlines for informed written comments nor meeting time for informed verbal public comments with access to agenda packet information. This seems to potentially keep the constituents ignorant and the government impervious to public opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a public hearing scheduled at 6:15. We're going to stop there on public comment, go to the public hearing.
Are you signed up?
And then we're coming back. We're coming back. First off, we have to knock out the exonerations on agenda item number one. Angie Paxton can come forward, and then we'll move to the public hearing.
There you go. Just take one and pass it down. Hello. I have two exonerations. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
The first one is in our 2023 personal property book, Cabletown District. Taxpayer should not have reported the 2017 Toyota Highlander. It was assessed at $16,170, tax amount $377.73. Applicant is John Shannon, ticket number 310622.
I'm going to approve ticket number 310622. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, most carries five zero.
The second one is in our 2023 personal property book, Shepherdstown District. Applicant was active military July 1st of '22 and was a Florida resident. So we're going to exonerate his 2020 BMW, assessed values $36,600, tax amount $854.98. Applicant is Dan Weisen, ticket number 316898.
I'm going to approve ticket number 316898. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I post, most carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to agenda number two, public hearing, 6:15.
I would appreciate it if you, Mr. Stalver, I've signed up for the public comment, and I have been denied that authority, and there's nothing in the meeting. The board will stop to assess that people do that. And I've been taken out of my position that I have obviously signed up for, and there's nothing along that paperwork that I just signed that said that you can stop the public hearing at any time. I only had three minutes. I believe that you could actually surrender to my request that I've already signed up for, please.
We're going to have the public hearing at 6:15. That's on our agenda for draft budget. And we're coming back to the public comment period that we dropped off. If you signed up for the public hearing and public comment, you will after we get done the public hearing. All right, if Bessie could come forward, or who's going to present the documents. Do you want to give a brief overview of the budget that we just finished up with this week?
I was expecting to do this a little later this evening. There's been some question regarding the statement made at a meeting several weeks, a few weeks ago. We're going, a deficit of $4.8 million. That is a budgetary deficit. The county has money in the bank. It has to do with dispersing the monies between a rainy day fund and our capital outlay fund. We spoke with the auditor's office on Friday. We found out that the budget that was approved by the auditor is not the budget that a previous person had entered into our financial system. So we have a lot of cleanup work to do on FY24. So that is a very large project that I'll be working on over the next two weeks. So in column, it says original financial system report budget. We were pulling numbers from our financial system, assuming they matched up with what was approved from the state auditor's office. The state auditor's office, it shows a 6.8 deficit, but that has to do with, again, putting monies over into your rainy day fund and your capital outlay. Ultimately, that leaves us with a $207,000 shortfall. We usually have a carryover from monies from the previous budget year, the monies that aren't spent. Normally, that comes from personnel with vacancies. We will have things like postage, materials and supplies, different departments have not used, and that is our carryover balance that always starts the new year off. I want to address the $1 million that was missing from the worksheet that was accounted for in our five-year projections that involved our transfers in from other departments or outside sources. I did not, I omitted that on the worksheet. The worksheet, the large document that we've been using as a working document over the past two weeks, was prepared at the request of the commission. We took the entire binder that, of all the requests from all the different departments and the presentations, all their notes and things, the request was made to put everything into one simple document so that we could go down line item by line item, review that, and then make cuts, additions, or what have you, to make it easier for the commissioners to make an educated decision. So this really was just an inside working document consolidating the entire binder that was actually published on our website.
And, madam budget director, I think you were directed by the commission.
I was.
To review the FY24 budget first. So the transfers, it's a matter of interpretation whether or not that should have been presented first. I don't think it's clearly wrong or incorrect to present the information in the order in which you did. Would you agree?
No, I mean, this, I omitted that. I omitted the last page of our working document. I did omit down at the bottom. We have added that back in. Charlie and I have been working diligently trying to find out. We didn't have a whole lot to go on from history, historical purposes. Anyway.
Let me just restate, we directed you to do it this way.
Yes, that's correct. That is correct. So we have prepared the budget. It is ready to go to the state. I do have some notes to go over with you. First of all, I want to congratulate the commission. You were able to balance the budget. And we have a few corrections to make from what was approved on the 19th. Of the past two days, we had to move, we had to add $80,000 back into the commission budget, where I removed too much money when we deleted the vacancy positions, and then we added, I'm sorry, we added that back into the commission line item. I've removed $80,000 from the 911 center for the CAD administrator because that is being funded now by the ARPA funding. That was approved last year to have a CAD administrator for the 911 center. We added an additional $39,152 from the assessors valuation fund, and we had to remove $23,000 from the Bolivar line item. The visitors bureau needed an increase of $25,246 for a total of $445,450. You'll see that on your column under the differences, and that's all been accounted for in the final budget. So the plan going forward, okay, I carry forward. I just explained the carry forward, the rollover, when we have monies left over from the previous fiscal year. The plan going forward during the month of April, we will be updating the Tyler financial system to match exactly with what the state has approved, and we are asking department heads to make any necessary internal budget revisions, and then we will be making state revisions as well, and we will bring those forward to you for your approval, and then forward those on to the state auditor's office. It is not uncommon to have state budget revisions throughout the year. So we're hoping to get a very large state budget revision going for April, to bring forward to you by April 5th. That is my goal, and we usually do another budget revision in June. So, and then I'm also requesting that we revisit the FY25 budget in May when we evaluate, dig into the FY24, evaluate everything, see where our position is planning to be the end of FY24, come back in May, and we can always revisit the FY25 budget and submit a budget revision to the state auditor's office if you decide to make any changes. Because I know we had to make some cuts in order to have everything balanced out this year. So with that being said, you have the budget is prepared and ready to be approved. I'm sorry, that was the five-year projection. This is the budget has been prepared. It is ready to be reviewed, approved, and published. I have to get that to the spirit of Jefferson tomorrow morning in order to make the state requirement of having it publicized by March 28th.
I think the proposed reviews, as we close out the fiscal year, are appropriate. I think we need to go back, as you recommended, and take a look at what happened during fiscal year '24 and make adjustments, as you recommend. We're going to have to do a lot of that, and I think that's a good idea. I think it's reasonable, the dates or the date estimates, if you will, that you've suggested this commission, and I support that.
Does email send any questions for Bessie?
Bessie, what you've outlined, I think, is definitely more hard work ahead to verify, you know, the foundation, what we built this budget on, and make sure everything's lined up where it's supposed to be. Because it was a tough year. Things were not updated within our financial system, and that's not the fault of anybody here. So, your office has lots of work to do. We do have a lot of work to do. Wish I could help, but I don't want to mess up the system, so.
Does email send any questions for Bessie? Hearing none, we're going to move to the public comment period, and then if we have any questions after, we'll bring you back up. That's fair enough. All right. Again, this is public, this is public comment for the FY25 draft budget. You could come forward, state your name, address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak to this matter. We're going to start off with, first with Susan Benzinger.
I'm Susan Benzinger. I'm a commissioner on the Parks and Recreations Commission. I live in Shamondale, and I understand that the budget, and I understand there's problems with the budget, but at the end of the day, our understanding is we have been cut a little over $100,000 in the amount of funds that we need to run. And I think that is a decision that needs to be changed because it's hurting local businesses, and it's hurting tax revenues. And I know people don't think about those issues when you're looking at parks and recs, but there are several reasons that it really does affect business. First of all, when a new business is coming to look at Jefferson County, we understand, and actually, we have talked to the visitors bureau about this and others, they're looking at what can employees do after work? Is there a place for recreation? Is there a place to take a class or just walk down a trail? And I think certainly we could all agree that our parks are such places. We have wonderful parks. The next thing to understand about the business side of the parks is how we directly affect the local economy. We have to purchase supplies, and people don't think about gravel, sand. I was going to say birdseed, grass seed, maybe it's the same. All of those things, that puts money back into the local economy, and that creates tax revenue. And then kind of the hidden one that you might not think about is when we have a big event. When we did the fireworks this past July, we had approximately 6,800 people show up to Sam Manquell's Park. We know through a special programming that 13% of that 6,800 people, which is 884, if I did my math right, ate at Jefferson County restaurants before the fireworks, and 12%, which is around 816 people, ate at a fast food establishment after the fireworks. 5% of the people that came went and gassed up their car after the fireworks. That's 340 people. I know you're wondering, crazy, but it's true. That is what happened. So there was a lot of business revenue collected for restaurants and gas stations, and who knows where else they stopped, and then taxes on that collected at the same time. So what I'm asking is that you restore our budget items, including the fireworks for next year, because that was taken out, is my understanding. That may have changed because I know the budget's fluid right now, and the rest of the funds so that we can keep doing what we do best, doing beautiful parks, and also generating tax revenue and revenue for businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tony Milburn.
Good evening. My name's Tony Milburn. I'm here tonight as president of your Parks and Recreation Commission, and I sat, as you all know, through every day of your budget session and listened to everything that you said. And what you asked for people to do was bring a flat budget. For those who didn't, you returned their budgets to flat, which was consistent across the board until you got to Parks and Rec. You returned us to flat and then proceeded to cut even further. You cut our salary lines. That's the only significant money, I will say significant amount of money, that we come to the commission for. And for some reason, for the first time in my 21 years on the board and doing budgets, it was decided that you needed to separate out FICA and benefits, and the county would not include that in our salary line. it was decided that you needed to separate out FICA and benefits and the county would not include that in our salary line. No, no reason that I understood was given for that. And I don't know still why that happened. But that's a cut to our employees' salaries that we have to make up somewhere else. You did also cut our scholarships. You cut our fireworks. Fireworks, you know, that's, that's a fun thing. It's something that we do for free for the community. We have finally gotten all the municipalities and the county on board where it's in the line item of a couple of budgets now and everybody's consistently giving. We don't know what this will do next year that, that the county decides not to give. We can probably deal with that. Our scholarships, however, are benefiting young kids who can't afford to go to programs. It's also benefiting senior citizens who can't afford to go to programs. It's not just kids who use those scholarship dollars. And I tell you, those scholarship dollars are always all used. So I would respectfully request that you reinstate at least the scholarships and our salary line. Because we, you know, keeping our budget flat, if that's what you want to do, then keep it flat. Please don't cut us even further. One other thing I would add, we, we had submitted a capital request for HVAC replacement at Sam Michaels at the Community Center. And in our budget, you included a line that, that's an in-kind donation to the Parks and Rec from you. So we had a line for a capital improvement for HVAC there. That was not included anywhere on your capital budget. I don't know where it went, but I will say we will be coming back for that because that HVAC system is now, you know, aging. And frankly, as you use that line and say, it's an in-kind to us, it's your building. So we will need help with replacing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jackie Miller.
I'm going to reiterate a request that I, after attending two of the four days of the budget, budget session, and this is my first in 24 years, to be honest. I really recognized the issues. We had a lot of interesting things happen. I really think that an audit should be done professionally, audit, independent, so that it can clear the air, get everything set, reset, whatever you want to call it. I would be disappointed if the county didn't do something like that. As far as the things that were cut and then reinstated and then cut again, I think Parks and Rec is an important part of our community. Lots of families do use those facilities. I know it's not something that EMS is, is important. And that did become very clear that EMS is an important part of the county. I would like to see all of the fire halls with an EMS ambulance. I don't care how old it is. I am very disappointed that Bakerton, people say that they've got sold. But I think they knew what was coming down the pike. And so with that said, I do want to know, how much did that transition cost this county? It cost us our ambulance out in an area that is not easily accessible. It was been there for decades, I think. And it, it, to remove that part will cost in the long run, because I witnessed last fall a helicopter ride that somebody had to have. So if you want to spend money, I think insurance companies are going to have a problem with having to shuttle helicopters out there as, as opposed to having, you know, an ambulance out there ready to go. So that's, that's my opinion. I hope to see that the money that we have be used in the future to equip all of these fire stations. And, and I think I were in the, I'm in an underserved area, as the word was used during the budget session. So I, I pay taxes and then I'm going to be asked to pay fees and get less service. And that's not fair. It's not fair for the mountain either. But I happen to live near the Bakerton area. It is not fair to ask us to pay higher fees for the, for a service that we are not getting. Other people are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kristy Stadig.
I'm Kristy Stadig and I'm a resident now of Harper's Ferry and I've been here about six years. I too attended two of the four budget meetings. I, I saw the struggle. I saw you all work together too, which was odd, but charming. I think we all kind of laughed. We cried. There was ups, there were downs. It was kind of like a roller coaster ride, truly, a roller coaster ride. And I think it's important for the public to know that I think the challenge that I saw Bessie face and all of you face is that this is a problem that is beyond this year. I think you can't, I don't know how to say this. I think it's, you guys all said it, that you're trying to fix a budget that's been kind of a mess. And I, I was impressed that you all voted for an audit in agreement. And I think that is a good measure. And I hope for the sake of this county that you do it because I think it's time that you have an independent person coming here and really just take a hard look and try to, it's almost like a fresh start to figure out how to begin. I think Bessie worked very hard from what, I don't know her staff. I don't, I don't know who else worked hard. You all worked hard. It's time to get a fresh start. It's, it's a bit messy and, and it needs to be fixed. And I think an audit will do that. I think it's time to fix this. It was hard to sit through that as a public person. I'm not a money person. I'm a science person. It was hard to see a person from the public come up and ask questions and literally find a million dollars, which didn't feel good. It sort of did, but then it was like, well, where did that come from? I'm confused. I don't want to be confused about money. This is our money. This is the community's money. I don't want to feel confused. I want to feel good about how my money's being spent. I don't want to feel like there's accounts that are unaccounted for. I don't want to feel like there's software that not everyone knows how to use. I think that we can do better as, as a, as a, as a county government. And I think an audit is the place to start for that. And I think it's a, what we need to do. So I hope that that's what's going to happen. Is that what, nods are good. Nods are good. Anyone else for a nod? A nod? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Next, we have David Tab.
I appreciate all the hard work. I think that was really hard to sit through for, for the public. That was really hard to sit through.
Next, we have David Tab.
David Tab, Jefferson County, lifelong resident and taxpayer. Before I could vote. Imagine that. I did not attend any of your budget meetings because all the other ones that I've attended in the past were a joke. I'm hearing a lot of that. There's only one person sitting here that was not involved in the previous budgets. I don't even know why he's still sitting here because it's a joke. You people need to understand that you're messing with my money. And my money plus all the people sitting here behind me. And all the other people that are just tired of it. It's a joke. I'm here to represent them. I don't take this lightly. I was not prepared to speak here tonight on this point. But with a 3, 2, 4, 6 million dollar deficit being said, I didn't write anything down to address these people's speak. So you're putting forth a flat budget with one of the largest increases of taxes that the people have to pay. What did each happen? I think it was Harp and money. It's like a drug addict. They get a little bit, a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more than what they do. They get displacent. So you got $6.6 billion. You have no paperwork back here to show us that. The only thing I saw was up here. That you had to take rainy day funds and manipulate what may or may not have been transferred back from the previous year that was used or wasn't used. Where's the proof of that? We're talking about $6.6 million to bring it back to a flat budget to balance it. That is not a balanced budget. That's using other money to plug a hole that this place is bleeding. And it's been doing it for a long time. There was this, some talk about the ambulances. The ambulances were taken by the Jefferson County Commission that they did not fund or pay for when they took them. They have been here by the public and by the stewards of the volunteer fire company. Thank you. Where's my other three minutes at, sir?
Once we get done this public hearing.
Okay.
Next is Denise Dick. Okay. All right. Do we have anybody on? All right.
Can you hear me now, sir, about that?
Yes, sir. Zach, go ahead. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Awesome. Thank you so much for your time. Yes, my name is Reed Holland. I'm actually in the Mountain, Shamondale. And I have been a member of Parks and Rec Board for about eight months. And although I'm fairly new to the board, it has been a phenomenal experience, you know, seeing all the great work that the staff do, all the part-time and full-time staff do and all the work of volunteers as well. As Toni and Susan have both said, you know, it's in my understanding that the county is proposing to cut our, you know, budget by about $100,000, including that scholarship and fireworks. And it appears that the county is hoping that, or is expecting that the taxes from the hotel motel will go and cover that gap. And obviously, that is a good, you know, source for funding, but that is very, it, you know, depends on a lot of, you know, you know, kind of factors. You know, obviously COVID was a huge challenge and the 340 shutdown and weather. So all these things can greatly impact that. So I think it would be unwise to rely on that source to go cover that gap. And I'm respectfully asking that you can, you know, vote no on going cutting this. I believe that it would be a huge disservice, not only to all the staff and volunteers, but also to the, you know, to all the county as a whole. Obviously, we're growing very quickly and these people that are moving here, they want, and in my opinion, you know, they deserve access to nature and parks and trails and recreation. You know, so again, thank you for your time and I respectfully ask you to vote no on that. Thanks, Bush. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else online? Okay, if there are no objections, then we'll close the public comment for the FY25 draft budget. Did anybody else have any further questions for Bessie? You want her to come back up to the front of the room? All right. I think our objective here tonight is to approve and to publish the, you want to come up here? I do have a question. If you don't mind. I guess our, our objective tonight is to approve and, and to move the budget to publish. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I would like to address the comments about the audit. I welcome another audit, but just to inform the public, we do do an independent audit every year. We have the auditors currently working on our FY23 audit as we speak now. And they will be in the office next week again. So we do do an annual audit every year, a single audit. So I just wanted to make the public aware of that as well. I, I'm feeling very confident after my conversation, or after our conversation with the auditor's office. The, the big question was, do you suspect fraud? I do not suspect fraud. I do not suspect anything malice being done by any official, by any employee whatsoever. I do firmly stand by the fact that I think it is a clerical errors. And with the volume of changeover we've had in that office and with our administration, we have no continuity going and it's learning experience as you move along. So I, I feel very confident that when I bring things back to you in April with my findings, that that's going to open everyone's eyes and we'll be able to correct the issues.
Can I just comment to that? So I think what the public's asking for, I know we do a single audit, which is not comprehensive. I do think there is an opportunity to, to have an audit by independent CPA firm or auditing firm that brings the public some reassurance. And again, I know it's been high turnovers and, and a lot of things have happened, a lot of transitions. I'm also particularly interested in the EMS transition and what that has cost us year to date. I don't think we still have true numbers on what's coming in from ambulance billing. Last year, I know I brought up some issues on the bank accounts being moved. And we did not have the signature of the sheriff, the county clerk, and the commission president on that. We had three employees on that. I don't have it here in front of me. I was given some reassurance by the former administrator that that had been addressed. But I have been to the bank and that has not been addressed. Which I will, I'll put that on the agenda, discuss in more detail. But I do think the EMS transition, since the board was dissolved and there's no month-to-month accountability from the treasurer and that board on the finances, I think that begs an audit as well. And I think the public just wants to know, there's been lots of moving pieces and parts, lots of numbers thrown around. This is a hard job to do is to balance the county budget. But I, I think we need, given that some things were entered, data entry, whatever it may be, I think the public wants reassurance. And I think that's why the call is for the, this, this audit to be done, and particularly by maybe an independent firm.
Right. What I was going to say was, a little over a week ago, it was that last Tuesday, our first budget day, we as a commission voted 5-0 to get the auditor's office to come in and have a look at at least the last two years of our, of our budgets. Again, I think Commissioner Jackson spoke to that in depth and I won't, you know, reiterate everything she said. But I, I understand what you're saying, Bessie, and I know that you've been working hard and I really appreciate it. I know it's a hard thing to do. But as a commission, we voted to have them come and have them have an in-depth look. And I think that the public would really appreciate that transparency. And I know that you don't think that there's been any malice and I'm not suggesting there is. But I think that we should have that, have that look, that closer look, more eyes on this budget for at least the last two years. I think that's necessary for the public. That, this is, this is our tax dollars.
And I respectfully acknowledge that. In conversing with the auditor's office, we actually went down and, and imported information from our financial statement, or I'm sorry, from our financial system, compared it line for line with them, identified the areas where they're off, so to speak. And the auditor's office, we had four or five people from the auditor's office online. And they didn't feel, they didn't, by seeing what we showed them, they didn't feel it was necessary to send someone down. But I'm sure we'll reach out to them again and ask them to go ahead and send someone down.
And I just wanted to make sure, the, it says the motion was to request the state auditor to review 23 and 24 budget as well as request an extension and filing. So we met with- as well as requesting an extension and filing. So we met with them.
I don't think anybody in the back can hear you very well.
The motion said that you motioned to request the state auditor's office review 23 and 24 budget as well as request an extension. So we met with the auditor and said, could you review these? And they said, we think that the best way forward is to go ahead, complete the 25, submit your budget revisions for 24, and they didn't see any issue. And then they denied our request for an extension.
Even after last year's budget mess, they still didn't think that it was necessary to come up and...
I think what they're waiting for is for us to do our budget revisions for 24, and then they can see if there is a problem.
That's disappointing. That's very disappointing. That's not what we voted for. And I think that if we just made the request, that they would come.
They declined it.
But who am I?
I mean, we did, we did ask them to come, and they declined it. I mean, we can always go back and ask again, but I'm asking you to let, allow me a moment to go back through FY24, figure out what all these moving pieces are, present that back to the state auditor's office, and then we can bring them in if that's obviously your wishes. And I would welcome another set of eyes at this point.
Could you provide a cost estimate for an independent audit, not tonight, but...
I'm sorry?
Could you please provide a cost estimate for an independent audit?
Are you making a motion?
No. Could you please provide a cost estimate for an independent audit?
It's around $35,000. That's what we pay for our annual audit now. I would imagine if it's going to be more forensic, then it's probably going to be more than that.
And I appreciate the budget revisions, but to bring that and identifying the problems. But I think the public would like some comfort in knowing why we had to make those budget revisions with that deficit that was...
And who does our independent budget every year? Who is that?
That's placed out to an RFP.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right.
All right. Does anybody else have any further questions?
I think that's something to consider as we're looking through our budget revisions. Obviously, we are $1,506 to the good. $35,000 roughly would take us into the red by about $34,000, $33,000. So that we would not have a balanced budget tonight. But as we're making revisions, you know, maybe you'll bring us some good news. Maybe something is uncovered. Can't count on that, but it could happen. And if not, that's something that we should look at as we conclude this fiscal year and look at next fiscal year. I also think we should look at hiring a finance director.
Anybody else? All right. All right. I will, I will then move the motion to approve the budget that was submitted to us tonight and move it to publish for the public.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries five-zero. All right. Thank you. All right. We have a little bit of time to finish up. We're going to go back to public comment. We have just like three people signed up for public comment. Then we'll come into agenda item number three to move from there. Next, for just general public comment, we have Mr. David Tab. David Tab, Jefferson County resident taxpayer was hindered from being in for public comment.
Mr. Tab, would you speak into the microphone so people can hear you? Thank you.
So with that said, it appears the county commission is coming up with millions of dollars of shortfall in the next budget 2024, 2025. You just got a major increase in assessments. Are the Jefferson County commissioners having trouble managing money? Did this have anything to do with the hostile takeover of the ambulance services in Jefferson County? You, the Jefferson County Commission, spent over $10 million of ARPA funds for the ambulance services takeover, and it appears that mutual aid is taking more ambulance calls than JCESA. Imagine that. The county commission has approved numerous solar farms at a cost of hundreds of millions of dollars. How much additional revenue has this added to help fund the county's needs? Meanwhile, a certain commissioner, since you're not supposed to say their name anymore, continues to have the sole control of the agenda, including hindering the public from requesting time before the county commission. Nowadays, it appears that when the county commission, certain person is challenged, he just has them arrested. I believe that both the emergency services and solar farms should have been voted on by the Jefferson County resident taxpayers. With the interim county administrator report, page 156 and 157 of the agenda pack is a proposal for a professional accounting service, which is not listed. Imagine that hidden in the papers. Does this mean that a certain county commissioner is having trouble keeping up where the money was shifted around to? Just asking. In regards to Jefferson County meeting agenda pack, it has West Virginia pledge. I am happy to know that the mountaineers always fee. It's not, it's in the paperwork. It says, mountaineers are always fee. Okay. Oh, that's right. The county commission charges fees on everyone. It did not happen by mistake. And we have a budget looking us in the face that there are probably fewer people than myself that could make this happen. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate those that have been arrested. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Tab.
Yes, we have Christine Weimer.
Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Christine Weimer. I represent Jefferson County Foundation. I would like to give comment this evening on the proposed bylaws for the planning commission. First, the planning commission committee meetings are clearly meetings under the act. The West Virginia Ethics Commission webpage dedicated to the Open Governmental Meetings Act states under frequently asked questions, are committee meetings subject to the Open Meetings Act? Do committee meetings need to be noticed? The answer, yes. All subunits of a governing body, regardless of size, must follow the Open Meetings Act. This includes regular, standing, and ad hoc committees. On this page, it further states that public notice of meetings and the agenda must be made available in advance of the meeting to the public. The length of the notice is dependent on the type of meeting. Regular meetings require notice three business days in advance of the meeting, not including the meeting day itself. It further states under regular meetings, for governing bodies which do not have a fixed schedule for meetings, these bodies may comply with the Open Meetings Act by posting a notice three business days in advance of the meeting. This is versus special meetings. Special meetings are when a body that meets regularly needs an extra meeting between regular meetings, not just when a body doesn't meet regularly. When a body doesn't meet regularly, any meeting is a regular meeting, requiring three days. Currently, the bylaw amendment only gives two days' notice, does not require public notice or a public agenda, and does not require minutes, and it doesn't require them to be posted. And it prohibits public comment. We request that you change the bylaws to require that public notice and the agenda be publicly posted three days in advance of the Jefferson County Planning Commission committee meetings, require that this posting be done in the same manner as is customary for the Jefferson County Planning Commission meetings themselves. So they may be posted on the website, for example. Require the meeting minutes be produced in accordance with the Open Governmental Meetings Act and publicly posted, post the meetings in accordance with the meetings posting practice of the Jefferson County Commission. So post draft, draft minutes. Remove the language that states, quote, however, there will be no public comment, end quote. Replace it with, public comment may be held at the discretion of the committee chair, or something similar. We think that these changes are important to keep the planning commission proceedings transparent and to keep the planning commission members accountable. And we think this will be a good faith effort moving forward. We don't want to slow down this process because we think opening these committee meetings is important. But we think that these amendments, these changes need to be made to the amendment before it's adopted. Thank you.
Public comment should always be welcomed.
We have moved to Denise Nick.
Hi, I'm Denise Nick, Harper's Ferry resident. First of all, I want to say that Mr. Stolifer, I will address you in this meeting if I have to, because you do not respond to emails. So if I'm in this meeting and I address you, that's my right to do so. Okay? We just stood up and said the Pledge of Allegiance before this meeting, and that means freedom, right? Freedom for everybody. Okay? Unless I'm missing something, that means freedom and liberty, as the pledge says. That means freedom of speech, freedom of expression, freedom to peacefully assemble, and freedom to protest. This freedom is not only limited to citizens, but public officials as well. Becoming a public official doesn't negate the fact that they are still citizens. After saying that, I want to say that I'd like to address the commission president's behavior last week during the rest of two-year commissioners. He was seen outside videotaping behind a car. And I hope that the ones that named him as president are embarrassed and ashamed. That's not professional behavior. That's infantile behavior to do something like that. And you all should be ashamed of yourself, putting him back in charge. And people want to know why this commission is in such chaos. Look who has been in charge for the last four years. President, vice president, president, president. It's been him. So I will address you during a meeting. There's nothing you can do about that. And I will say, Tricia and Jennifer, Galatians 6:17. From henceforth, let no man trouble me, for I bear in my body the marks of the Lord Jesus.
Praise God. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number three, Sheriff Tom Hanson. This is for the approval of the control room.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm here in front of you tonight for renewal of the pup grant, which is the grant for up to $10,000 for spay and neutering of animals being held by my animal control people. I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the award of up to $10,000 for the West Virginia Spay and Noodle Program for the continuation of the pup control program and authorize president to sign the documents.
This sounds like a winning proposition for, on many different levels. So I'll just repeat the motion to make it official. I move to accept the award of $10,000.
Up to $10,000, commissioner.
Okay. It says here.
It's been changed.
Okay. All right. I start over. I'll move to accept the award up to $10,000 from the West Virginia Spay and Neuter Program for the continuation of the pup control program and authorize the president to sign the associated documents.
A second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post. Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you, commissioners. Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right. We're running pretty much on time. So this is our seven o'clock public hearing. Nancy Strine, come, you want to go forward? This is a community development board, City of Martinsburg, to discuss the housing needs of Jefferson County for FY23. This is the Home Investment Partnership Program. I'll turn the floor over to you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And you have, you do have to speak very close to the mic.
Okay. Okay. So are we opening the public hearing now?
If you want to, if you want to give us a little brief overview, then we'll open up the public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Hi. Hi, my name's Nancy Strine. I'm the home and CDBG administrator for the city of Martinsburg. And I manage the Eastern, the Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium, which entails all of Berkeley, Jefferson, and Morgan County. So I was up in Morgan County yesterday, so they send their greetings to you all today. So I go around every year to renew our home, our home grant program. And then every three years, I go to all the little, the cities in the town. So, and this is, will be coming up as soon as I finish that. So we'll be doing that as well. Making sure that everybody knows about it and is participating jurisdiction.
Does anybody have any questions?
Can you give us a brief outline of what these programs do, so the public understands?
Okay. Currently, the home, this is part of my speaking thing, but the home, home program is the largest federal block grant to state and local governments. They're designed exclusively to create affordable housing. And as you know, we have a very, almost to the point of crisis, affordable housing problem. Well, historically, since 2007, we've been participating in this program, and we've been doing just, I shouldn't say just, because we've done really well. But we've been doing, it's called Housing Assistance Program, and it's the first time housing, it's for first-time housing buyers. And it's a second mortgage. It's for down payment and closing costs. And we've assisted 340 first-time home buyers in the whole Eastern Panhandle, 85 in Jefferson County. We've been humming along pretty well, and then all of a sudden, this past year, we had a little, I'll say blip, because every time the interest rate goes up, it makes it more, almost impossible for the first-time home buyer. So it's been really, it's been a struggle. They try to buy houses, contracts fall apart. I had one in Morgan County, and it was a new construction, and it was a USDA loan, NR loan. And the foundation wasn't done right, so the USDA pulled it. So, and instead of them fixing it, what they did was they put it back on the market at a higher price. So I mean, that's because it's, our prices around here are, that's what's, that's what's happening. So unfortunately, you know, the inventory is low, but the availability for first-time home buyers is, is a lot harder. So, because we're, the city of Martinsburg, since we're the cognitive agency that ministers these grants, we're going through a five-year planning. We're doing a planning process. So we're basically using all the tools we can, all the eligible activities for home. We want to put that into the home grant now so that we can create other alternatives for affordable housing. So we're putting that into our budget. So we're saying, and/or, so our Housing Assistance Program and/or possibility of renovating homes. Our Home Consortium, which Bob Anderson is one of your representatives. We had a meeting, and they recommended that we add that a little bit more, but to add the fact that we need a nonprofit group to help us administer that if we're going to do renovation of homes throughout the counties, because, you know, we can't handle all that ourselves. So we're going to look into that. And then the last thing is to provide tenant-based rental assistance, which there is a great, great need for that throughout the Eastern Panhandle as well. And we've, we're going to give some, we've, they voted to approve a grant for the Community Networks, Inc., to do that. to do that, and then we'll see how that goes, and then we'll open that up to other organizations. So we're trying to take all the elements of what's eligible for this grant, so that we can provide better assistance to the affordable housing. And we do have a committee, we do have Jefferson County, and Morgan, and Berkeley. We have, we always put it on our agenda, affordable housing. So we do try to figure out ways to, we talked about it, and you might want to mention about trying to work with some developers.
Is this on? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Well, I've been trying to get affordable housing in Jefferson County ever since I went to work with the City of Ransfield a few years ago. And I was struggling until I met Nancy. What I found out is there's just a lack of communication. The general public does not know of what is available to them to try to get affordable housing. And in speaking with the Realtor that's worked, one Realtor that's working with us, she provided a list of maybe 20 or 30 houses that could be affordable, but a lot of people, even though they're less than 300,000, which is considered affordable. Jefferson County, I think, for new houses, 330, for existing, it's like 275 or 280. Point is, these are under $300,000 homes. And even though someone may be looking at it, they don't know that they may qualify to get assistance. So Nancy and the board has reached out to Realtors, all the Realtors generally in the area, to make them aware that these programs are available, because some of them still may not know that they can just pick up a phone call and go online and, and try to qualify for the monies that are out there. And there is money out there, but the general public is really not aware of it, and I think it's just a lack of communication and awareness. And we're trying to get that point across to as many people as we can, so.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any further questions? All right, here none. We're going to open it up for public, for the public hearing. And we didn't have anybody sign up in the room. Do we have anybody all on?
Okay. I just wanted to say a few other things for the public hearing. The, what was I going to tell you? Oh, okay. With, with our Housing Assistance Program, the maximum allowable price for a home is 285 for existing homes and 337 for new homes in Jefferson County. We have a Realtor that's on our Home Consortium, and she gives us the monthly statistics every, every time we meet. And the medium sales price for December 20, for December 2023 was 600, I mean, I'm sorry, $365,000. Thousand. It was 277,500 in January, so it's going up and then going down. And now, in February, it's 379,900. So what she's doing is she's starting to send to me and a few of the other members, some of the house, housing sales, sales that are, meet our criteria, so that when we do deal with people, we can send that out immediately. So it just kind of gives them a little bit of a leg up. But that's, that's one of the problems, is the inventory is just not there. So, but I do have other good news. We do have the Home ARP program, which is $1.8 million for home assistance. And I've been working with JCCM this past year. They put in a couple applications. We were able to, the Home Consortium was able to approve 284,615 applicant, an application to renovate the 202 racetrack street for a project that will cost $539,740. So we will take that to the Mayor and Council of Martinsburg, because again, we're the Congressman Agency of the Grant. And then to get that approved, and then, so they'll be able to start working on that project with the two apartments and all that back there behind our racetrack. And then also, we have the Voices Against Domestic Violence for Transitional Support. They approved a grant for supportive services for 35,000. And so again, that will be taken. So we do have some other assistance that is coming in to provide housing. So, so that's about it. But you said there wasn't anybody that wanted to speak?
We were checking online too. We don't have anybody, so.
That means there's a consensus in support of this terrific program.
And so for the record, I have to, if there's no objections, I have to close the public comments, and so I'll open it. And I agree with Commissioner Marching.
Okay, thank you.
This may want to move that motion.
Okay.
I'll move.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, move that we approve the resolution authorizing participating in the Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium of West Virginia for the period of July 2, 2024 to June 30, 2025.
Second, in discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, most curious five zero.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, a little-known program that can do a lot, if you get the connections.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Does anybody need a break? Very good.
I'm good.
Okay, good. All right, we'll keep moving. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five. Gillian Olson with Environmental Health Manager, Jefferson County Health Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm Gillian. I'm the Environmental Health Manager at the Jefferson County Health Department. And I am here tonight to request your approval on a new local Board of Health rule. It's the Jefferson County Board of Health Environmental Health Fees for Permits and Services Rule. The reason we're adopting this new rule is because Senate Bill 17, which has been approved, it just hasn't been signed by the Governor yet, will repeal the state rule that allows us, well, that sets our limits for fees and provides the definitions of all of our establishments that are in that rule for the fees. And it also removes all references to local boards of health from 64 CSR 51. Therefore, we have to adopt our own local rules, so we can continue to charge fees for services. And last year, the revenue that we collected in fees for environmental health services was over $400,000, which is about 28% of the total revenue last fiscal years for the Health Department. So with that, with that being said, does anybody have questions about?
I have a question. It says here, the new local rule does not include any fee increases. The fees will remain the same. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So this new Senate bill, it doesn't give you any local control over setting the fees?
It is giving us local control over setting the fees.
But you're choosing right now not to raise the fees.
Yes, our board decided to, I gave them two options. One was with increased fees, and one was with the current fees. And because we didn't really have a very long time to put them out for public comment, and because we needed the approval of the County Commission, and we had to get it done in a certain amount of time, because we're expecting that the repeal to be in place by April. So, so if we didn't have our own local rule in place before then, we couldn't charge fees, so.
I see where you're coming from then, yeah.
Because of the timeframe, we, we just, they opted to go ahead and stick with our current fee schedule. And we'll look at an increase later.
Yes, okay, thank you for that explanation.
And, and in compliance with West Virginia Code 16211, we are required to get the County Commission's approval after the, within 30 days after our Board of Health approves the rule. And they approved it at our meeting on March 8, after it was out for public comment from February 23 through March 7. So, and we didn't receive any public comments.
All right, does anybody else have any further questions? All right, I'll move to approve the Jefferson County Board of Health's adoption of local rule, Jefferson County Board of Health fees for permits and services as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host, most curious five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, here with Probate Office. I think Nikki's here. Just Karen.
I just, you're going to have to.
Oh, and we had to move to.
But I have to recuse myself, because I know some of the parties involved in this.
Okay.
So I have.
All right, so we have to move to Fiduciary Review, move, we move to Fiduciary Review Board. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody, most curious four zero. And for the record, Commissioner Tab has refused herself from this agenda item. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Probate Office has forwarded for your review a motion to remove the executor's Catherine Collins, also known as Catherine Cope State Yon, and seize estate records for the estate of Dorothy F. Cope State, deceased. In addition to the forwarded, the documents that I had already forwarded to the Commission, you have, you should have received yesterday an email from Frank Hill, which was assigned as a fiduciary commissioner back when this first started. And you should have received that, that says that his recommendation as the fiduciary on the estate and local attorney Henry Morrow Jr. will be here presenting this request for your all's ruling. So he's here with his client and will come forward.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you. I'm here, basically, I presume that you've seen the motion to remove the executors. That the Commissioners have had a chance to study that. The only other thing I want to add to that is in terms of evidence that I might have is an affidavit, which is executed by my client, Jamie Cope State, and I want to ask if that be considered. I have copies for here.
George, yeah, you should have a approach and hand out copies. Yes, sir. Thank you. Does anybody need more time to review that?
I just need one more minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, may proceed, sir.
Okay, there's been no filed response to the motion and petition that I filed. The facts and allegations that are detailed in that, I think, are supported by the affidavit that I've just handed you. Mr. Hill has reviewed the matter and has concurred that, that, and recommended that my order, proposed order, which I've given to the Council, and will now share with you. It's appropriate to be entered. It's his recommendation by letter, so.
Thank you. All right, you have plenty of time to read that.
Thank you.
All right, yes, sir, good. All right, yes, sir, good.
Okay, just to put a finer point on it, there is no, the law doesn't allow administrators of estates, executors of the states, to make loans unless there is authorizing statute. And there is no such authorizing statute. There's not, there's no statute allows that to happen. The will, the will could authorize it, but in this case, the will does not authorize loans. So apparently a loan was made in order to cover whatever debts or whatever else the company had at that time, and now there's nothing to pay the loan back. It was done in contravention of law. It was illegal, and it never should have been done. In that respect, the executrix has betrayed her trust, and she is held to a high degree of responsibility in administering the state, and she failed that. And we ask that her appointment be revoked and terminated, and that the SNC is to see exactly what else happened in the estate, and that my client, who is the substitute executrix under the will, be appointed and replaced instead. There are no other assets to go out. Every other asset would have been due the administrator, the executrix, and she barely got her assets. The only person who's harmed by the Sydney estate is my client, who's the COVID Fisher.
Mr. Cochran, on occasion, you recommended that we appoint a special master to deal with complex cases before probate. Do you recommend that this evening, or shall we proceed?
Well, at this point, it appears that Mr. Hill, who has been a fiduciary administrator, has reviewed this, this document. I believe that you would find from our probate folks back there that this matter was advertised and this person was given notice about this issue. Is that correct? So they're indicating the affirmative about that. However, I would, if the court, or the, sorry, the Commissioner chooses to proceed, I would recommend a modification of the order that was provided. And that would be to go to paragraph three. The first line says, "The Sheriff of Jefferson County is hereby directed to serve a copy of this order upon Catherine Collins." I would put a period right there and strike the remainder of that paragraph, simply because I don't want to imply or potentially incur any search or seizure issues that may be raised in this case. And I believe that the bottom of the first paragraph directs Catherine Collins and her agents to forthwith deliver and transfer all documents, records, and any remaining assets to the successor as executrix. I believe that that requires Ms. Collins to deliver everything that she has. I would probably also recommend that, that small amendment to that to maybe to say Catherine Collins and her agents are hereby directed to preserve all documents, records, da, 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 and deliver those to the successor executrix forthwith. And then it refers it to the sheriff for investigation. Upon the sheriff's investigation, if he determines that there may have been a crime committed, he can take appropriate steps at that point.
So Nathan, sorry, you said paragraph three.
I would, after the word Collins.
I know, but.
Correct the rest of it.
So I guess I'm, these are numbered, and I'm looking for paragraph three that you're referring to.
Of the order?
No, it, they're, I mean.
Numbered paragraph three is not as.
Yeah.
Oh, well, this is, I'm sorry, this is at the end, at the order first. It's on page three. I'm sorry about that. Then maybe that.
That's, yeah, I was like, wait a minute, I'm trying to follow, but sorry about that.
So it says, "Upon Catherine Collins," there in the second line, I would place a period right there and strike the remainder of that paragraph.
Do you have any thoughts on a potential motion to table until our next meeting so we can get this in writing, or do you think we should just proceed? I noticed three or four edits.
Yeah, that would, that would be up to you. It might be cleaner if Mr. Morrow and I worked out some.
I was, I was suggesting just making the motions with the changes that's a rep, that our councils represent, or suggesting that we make, and we have a clean copy. We clean up a copy.
And I don't know if you want to hear Mr. Morrow on, on that issue, or if he's opposed to making those changes, but I'm, I'm concerned about implicating any potential search and seizure issues.
Do you have any comments on that, sir?
I don't have any objection to the changes that the council suggested.
Okay.
I mean, if we want to make some changes, you want to make that as part of the motion today, I think that's fine.
Okay. All right.
And then, and then provide Commissioner Salfer that you would, would sign the amended order with those changes.
Okay.
With that, if that's what you all want to do, if you want to bring it back next time, you can do that, too.
Sure. I'll go ahead and move a motion to accept this order as submitted with the, with the changes our council has recommended, and then authorize the, once they are changed, we'll have authorized the president of this commission to sign.
Second, I have a question.
Sure.
Technical, did our mics working properly? Were you able to get all of that? And do you think you can? Okay.
Okay.
All right, because it was a little bit.
All right, I just want to make sure.
All right.
Do we have any other discussions?
Yep, I have a question. So Nathan, you suggested that we put the period after her name.
Yes.
And strike the rest where it says, "And furthermore, to seize all books and records relating to the estate, et cetera." What did, what was it that you said about having a problem with them seizing the books and records relating to the estate?
I don't know that there is a problem, but it does leave a potential that someone could raise some, some claim that the items were seized illegally, that they were seized without due process. And in that case, it's possible they could then claim that any of the evidences could not be used in a criminal prosecution. And I, it's, it's more, it's just cleaner if the sheriff investigates it, and if the sheriff determines there's cause to try to investigate this further, he can always get some kind of warrant or something like that and go from there. And that way, there's no claim of an illegal search.
Okay.
I do not know if that claim would be successful, but it would head off that claim.
Okay, I suppose my question is, will the sheriff, it says, is hereby directed to serve a copy of this order? Is it just assumed that he will then do an investigation?
Well, it's referred to the sheriff to do an investigation, whether, you know, what the conclusion of that investigation would be, would be up to the sheriff.
Yes, I just didn't want to hamstring the sheriff at all. We're not doing.
It doesn't hamstring him. He's just seeing, he's, paragraph three, referring it for investigation and prosecution of any criminal violations determined in his investigation. So just like any other case.
Okay.
He's going to investigate it, and if he determines there was a crime committed, then he can move forward from there, just like any other crime.
Okay, and you're okay with this?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And so, and then we would perhaps put words to the effect of what I said in paragraph one. Mr. Morrow and I may have to adjust the language just a little bit. I just threw that out there, but it would say to the effect of what I said in paragraph.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions or discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that we come out of the fiduciary review board.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, post, motion carries four zero. We'll take a two-minute break. Ready, everybody's back. All right. All right, we're back, back to business here. Say we're going to move on to agenda item number seven. I know I'll mess this up, but we're staying pretty much on time tonight. So we'll move to Laura Kuhn, Director of Jefferson County Fleet Facilities. Don't jinx this, Laura.
Try not to.
Or Mike or Jenny. I'm just, I'm just joking. You take some.
So I'm here to request a budget revision for the vehicle fuel line for the current fiscal year. Fuel costs have continued to run high. We also added the additional vehicles with the ESA. That includes 10 diesel ambulances, which you know diesel is higher cost fuel than regular gas. And comparing fuel costs from this time last year, we have spent it over 46,000 more than we did at this time last fiscal year. So I did a breakdown. We, we pay our fuel bill weekly. At this time last year, we were at, first week of, I did this based on the first week in March. We were at $149,528. This year through the first week of March, we were at $196, $196,134. So, and I also pulled the fuel bills from last year and this year for the beginning of March. Last year, we, we paid our first, our first bill in March was, for the first week in March, was $5,340. Well, this, that's current year. Last year was $4,757. So we're definitely continuing to see those increases. We started out tracking when I looked at this last year, saying on track, and then eventually got higher and higher as the weeks went on through the fiscal year. I put in your packet a breakdown of each of those weeks so you can see the cost increases as the year progressed. So I'm asking for additional $50,000 to move into the fuel line to cover the rest of this fiscal year. And that should get us through to the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the transfer of 50,000 to the B hit fuel line, number 001717434301.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm going to vote to approve it, but I'm just curious. What, what do you think, what are you projecting the total? Because overage is the word I'm going to use. We're going to have for FY '24 for fuel.
If we were to say where we are now, I looked at it to be around 45,000 to 46,000. So I figure with 50,000 more, that should cover us for the rest, through the end of June.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Gas prices are going up. This is diesel, but.
Right.
You know what? I actually think it could be a heck of a lot worse.
Yeah, definitely.
And I think other municipalities are seeing, or feeling the pain.
Yeah.
At the pump, a lot worse. So, yeah, we're going to have to pay our bills, obviously.
Right, and the majority of those, the, the fuel bill is for our emergency vehicles, like sheriff's department is more than half of the weekly fuel bill. So, you know, there's no way we can get around that.
So you used low test or anything like that?
Miss Shader.
It would have to be a state budget revision. I do not have that money in my budget.
That's what I want to know, is where are we taking the funds from?
Where's it coming from?
So we.
So we need transfer.
Yeah. Texting Bessie and emailing her, like trying to get the, the item of where it's coming from. So if it's not an internal budget revision.
Eddie, you have to speak a little bit more into the.
Yep. So that's what I need to know is what line item or line items is it coming from in order to go into this fuel expense?
I don't know that, I could work with Bessie to maybe find that I don't have it in my budget. So it would have to come from somewhere else, and I don't know, you know, where that money would come from.
Well, I think we should table this until we figure out where the money's coming from and then put it in a budget revision form. I mean, that's not your business, but. Come from finance office.
Particularly since we have revisions, obviously, to do for '24 anyway.
Right, yeah.
Because I thought this was an internal transfer.
No, I don't have it in my current budget.
All right, well, I'll move to table, or I'll move to remove my motion, my original motion. Second that, and then, which you did. And, and then I think the request is with the consensus of the commission, we'll come back with the, to know where we're going to move it from.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to. Jean Brockman, Jefferson County Department of Engineering Planning Zoning.
Chairs are so low.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead and adjust it there. Now you're a taller person.
Thank you. Thank you all for taking the time to look at this. The, the bylaw amendments initiated by the planning commission was originally because in February, January and February, we had to cancel three meetings in a row due to weather. And during, we, we've always had a policy that all meetings were in person, except during COVID, we followed the direction of the county commission. Everybody was meeting remotely and we slowly got ourselves back to where we were all meeting in person. And the planning commission realized they didn't have a way to call a meeting by Zoom only due to weather unless we wrote it into the bylaws. So this started as an amendment related to allowing meetings to be held by video conference and that the planning commission members, the applicants, the public could all participate that way. So that would be like a regular meeting like we did during COVID. But we also had had a conversation at the same time about making sure that the committees were, that the public was aware of when the committees were meeting and that the meetings were open for the public to attend, but not participate in, just to attend. And so the amendments in this section include both amendments related to opening the committee meetings to the public, posting the meetings, taking minutes, having those all posted, just like we do for any other kind of meetings, and related to allowing any, the president of the planning commission to hold any of those meetings, regular meetings, special meetings, or committee meetings via some, we didn't use Zoom, that's what we normally use, but we just put video conferencing there in case we went to go to meeting or something like you all use. So using a video conferencing. So that's, that's a summary of what is in here, it's all redlined and the way the state law is written and the way our amendments are written, the planning commission can initiate this, but you all have to approve it. So that's why it's to you for your action.
Was this in accord with the Open Meetings Act?
It is my understanding that it is, I did hear comments about the two days wasn't enough notice for the committees, we could change that to three days if that's what's required.
Have you done a legal review to make sure?
Well.
Yes, that's, was my recommendation too.
So we could change section 2.4, the second paragraph to at least three days. I think when I was doing that section, I was looking at the special meetings, not the regular meetings, so that is a two day notice. And I just used that as an example.
So I have some, I have a question.
Okay.
What might be an instance where the planning commission would delegate limited powers to a committee? That's the first line, I'm sorry, section 2.4 committees. After West Virginia Code 8A21115, it may delegate limited powers, what, what would those powers be?
To, to do the research and get the information related to a particular topic.
So they're more of like an advisory committee?
Yeah, they, so we tried to add the purpose is to act as a fact finding body for the use of the planning commission and no action is taken by the committees. So every committee we've had either is doing their own research with staff helping, or sometimes they bring in outside people who are experts in whatever the field is and get information from them, sort of sort through the information, put it in an order that's useful to the planning commission. And then have the staff put it all in the packet.
Okay, so I, I kind of like the idea of calling an advisory council or advisory committee if its sole purpose of these subcommittees is research. And I think their role, as you just described, would be to advising the planning commission and not necessarily have empowers to do anything other than the research and that. I believe also that those meetings should be available both in person and by video. There are people with limited video conferencing abilities in broadband. And I also do not like the idea of there being no public comment for, for those. I do think we should abide by the Open Meetings Act with publishing and operating, even though they're advisory, they should be following since they're reporting into a governing body. The Open Meetings Act.
Right. So the posting should be down in the same manner as the, as the planning.
That is what, yeah, that's what, that posting is in. I mean, the planning commission wanted it to be posted like a regular meeting, minutes to be taken, all of that, so that's how this is written. My only concern about allowing public comment is that I feel like it would mislead the public into thinking that that's the right place to make the public comment and they might not realize they can't influence a committee, the committee is just.
I think, yeah, that's one part is, I think, calling it a committee, which is like a board or a, so advisory council or something like that. But I think the public should always have an opportunity to be engaged, the public might have information to contribute to some of these meetings when they're, when they make their public comment during people's research. You know, to, to move forward to the planning commission. So they, the public might have some information, they might be able to contribute during public comment, that would be helpful to this committee to, to forward on to the planning commission.
I, I agree, I have some, some very serious issues with this. It, it almost feels as though you're trying to push the public away, keep the public out, and I don't like that. I, I've noticed a lot of issues lately with the planning commission and their tendency to, to drop meetings or pop up a meeting and, and then these, the idea that the public is not allowed to comment is, is a real problem to me. I think it's a very important that we always realize that members are here to serve the public. We, we serve you, you don't serve us, you're not, you're not an inconvenience. This is my job to sit here and listen to this, make these kinds of decisions and, and it really bothers me, however, there will be no public comment, I can't support that. And when it says, and this is at the, it is section 2.4 committees. On the back of the first page, it says, "On occasion, the planning commission president may call a committee meeting to be a video conference only meeting." And I don't know how you'll notice that, I mean, how is.
Same way we do it now.
Is that, is that enough time for people to be able to make adjustments? I, I don't know. It, it just.
Well, if you don't like us canceling meetings, then you have to let us do the video conferencing because we had to cancel three meetings in a row due to weather.
I don't support closing the meeting to the public, which I think that has happened this past year.
Well, the committee meetings weren't even noticed before, so.
There's my problem.
Well, because we believe that the Open Meetings Act does not require them to be open to the public.
So even.
We're making this change.
Yes, ma'am, I just want to say this, even if it's not required, you should do it. Because you don't, you want to avoid any appearance of impropriety, you want to avoid any.
That's why we're making this change.
Yes, and, and what brought us to this point is the secrecy, the hiding, things of that nature, not letting the public comment about things. I, I have a real problem with what's been going on with the planning commission lately. And, you know, I'm not taking that out on you, I know it's a large group of people, but it, it just seems from the, the messages that I get from our public, who I am here to serve, that the planning commission are being secretive. And I think that when you keep the public out and you tell them you can't speak about what we're talking about, that's a really bad place to be. So I, I'm not, I don't support this.
I think if we make significant changes, you guys need to tell me what you'd like to change, I probably need to take it back to the planning commission because it was their, their bylaws.
Yeah, I would appreciate, do you want me to reiterate, would you like me to send you an email on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll take the changes tonight, I'll try to keep it notes here, 2.4 to change that to three days, change the name of the committee to.
Committees.
I think, and then what was the other?
Always, public comment is welcome.
Well, we want to put in there, they follow the Open Meetings Act, even though they're advisory committees, I think we ought to follow the standards of the Open Meetings Act.
The Open Meetings Act doesn't require them to be able to speak, it just requires them to be able to attend.
So that's my problem, I just feel that maybe we should go the extra mile, open things up to the public, avoid any appearance of impropriety.
Yes, Chairman, I move that we table this pending legal review for compliance with.
Well, the problem, I'm sorry, go ahead.
He, he just said we table this.
Yes, but, but the problem, in my opinion, has to do with the legal review. It's the same attorney that, you know, put this together in the first place, correct?
I'm the one that.
Oh, you were, okay, all right, well, my issues are noted.
I think we, I think we table it and provide, and then Jenny bring this back with our changes.
We have a, well, the motion to table for legal review.
So are you then referring an accident to the planning commission at the same time?
Yeah.
I stated the motion exactly.
For legal review, not to rewrite it.
For legal review first.
Okay.
Yeah, before it goes back.
It hasn't been a second.
Okay. I'm just seeing, I'm just trying to see your motion, I will second that motion for legal review because I think we need to set a legal.
Start there.
Start there. And yeah.
And then, and then bring it back.
Yes, ma'am.
Without changes?
I think we ought to, I have an opportunity, submit our changes before legal review.
Yeah.
Would you consider submitting your results with edits from the commission, suggested edits from the commission for legal review?
I like your edits for the record, but I think if we start debating what we're going to edit right now, we're going to have a debate at this.
No, I'm saying we submit our edits to, to Jenny or in Nathan for the rewrite before it goes back to the planning commission.
Okay.
He will legally review it, our edits to include.
The difficulty is, the planning commission is the one that drafted this. I don't know that. We.
Use your microphone, Nathan, please, thank you.
The trouble is, the planning commission is the one that drafted this, or gave, gave Jenny the instruction on drafting it. And I, I think it would be better if you just want a legal review to me, give you an opinion about what it is right now. And then at the next meeting, we can, you know, you, you can do whatever changes you want and send it back to the planning commission if that's what you want to do.
If you're comfortable providing legal review contemporaneously, sure.
Yeah, well, I would rather. Yeah, I know, that's what I'm seeing, I, I'll bring it back at the next meeting and then you all can make whatever changes you deem or suggest or changes. I'm sorry.
Motion on the floor is to have legal review this, then we'll bring it back, then, then make them, then I guess at that point we'll send it back to planning commission with the changes. There's a motion, the second, is any more discussion?
When are we going to have this back to look at, next meeting?
Next meeting.
I can bring it back by next week.
I just wanted, you know, to see if another component can be added to these committee meetings and so forth, or planning commission, some sort of minute, meeting minutes, nothing detailed, but that, you know, they discuss, they researched.
It's on here, the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. On the top of the second page, it says committee meetings, or let's see, such committee meetings shall be recorded and the recordings and minutes shall be maintained and made available.
I see it now, yes, okay, all right, thank you, Jenny.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Post, motion carries five zero. All right, thank you, man. Next, we're going to move on to agenda, I number nine, Mike sign.
Good evening, just two items, hopefully it won't take very long. The first one, I already kind of briefed at the last meeting, it wasn't on the agenda. The Berkeley County Commission is submitting congressional directed spending request to build a regional fire EMS and law enforcement training center. It'll be located in partnership on the James Robsey Technical Institute facility grounds. It'll serve the whole eastern panhandle, our region. This is also in partnership with the West Virginia Public Safety Training. That's where we get a lot of our training from. You may or may not know, we do have training grounds in Jefferson County and it does have a small building on it that's, it's really only certified for smoke training. We can't do live fire training in it. Millions of dollars can be invested in these facilities, so this is probably our best shot at having some type of facility that is very close to us. And it will benefit, you know, multiple counties, so really just looking, they requested endorsement letters, one's going to Senator Manchin and one to Representative Capito.
I'll move to, with us, Chairman, to the President to sign the support letters for the regional fire EMS law enforcement training facility.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just, I'm looking to the future. I know we're endorsing this, does that mean there will be an ask for money in the future, or maybe it's too soon to tell, or?
You mean for us, for Jefferson County or for them?
Yes, for Jefferson County to contribute a portion.
Has not been indicated at this point, they have plans and stuff for a building already and I think they're asking for the full amount to build their current plans, so.
They're asking from the feds for that money.
Federal funding, yes, for this, no, there was no, no mention of matching funding or anything.
That we're committing to fund.
Yes, yes, correctly, it's literally just, just an endorsement as one of the regional partners in this.
And congressional offices want to know that there's buy-in from the local governments, that the local governments don't oppose it.
Right, okay.
Ours is currently the only county that has not supported, sent letters.
No, and I'm fully in support it, I just wanted to make sure if there's a dollar amount, I knew what that was.
Absolutely. Yes.
All right, any more discussion?
Yeah, we're talking about Senator Shelley Moore, right, not Representative Moore.
If Senator, I spoke incorrectly, yes.
The letters.
For the right person.
With the letters here.
Yeah, they gave us draft letters and we put it, it's on county letterhead.
Yes.
All right, any more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, the next item is reference to ambulance billing, a small handout here, I did not have ready in time.
Thank you.
The topic is related to some cliff notes I'm going to cover, this is related to billing for non-transports. It's kind of been a topic recently, this started back during COVID, there was, we didn't transport everyone during COVID because a lot of people were just sick. Sort of like the flu, you had to work it out at home, hospitals were overtaxed, so we were treating patients at home, evaluating them and not transporting them. Medicaid and some of the insurance companies started paying for those services and they have continued that process. I believe the state legislature is. And they have continued that process. I believe the state legislature is working on getting the remainder of the insurance companies that don't, to require them to pay for their services. It's what it would be for those calls that are, what we say, treated, but no transport. And treatment could be literally the assessment. We've evaluated the patient, determined that they're not ill enough to go to the hospital. They don't want to go to the hospital, but they've received, they may receive some type of bandaging medication or not, okay? All calls that we do transport, obviously, are billed. That's in one of the following pages, but. So currently Medicaid, many of the auto insurance policies and many medical insurance companies already have fees built in that they, they pay for these items. Medicare does not. Medicaid pays a, a flat rate of eighty-nine sixteen per incident. Most of the autos, from what I was told, this, this information came from MCA, Medical Claims Assistance, who is our billing representative. Most insurance auto pays two hundred dollars and most of the medical insurances pay up to three hundred dollars. And like I said, the state code, they, they were working on at this session to try to make this mandatory for insurance providers. Many of the medical providers in the state are struggling with funding. So this is a, a small bump to, to what we can reclaim, especially on calls. In the lower part of the state, a big problem is the overdoses. You, you treat the patient, you, you give them several medications, several of our items, medical supplies we use on them, and then you can't recoup because you didn't transport them. And so, they're, they're trying to remedy that. What she said, some places charge a flat rate and some have a tiered rate. Right now, currently, we do about twenty-eight hundred of our transports in the last twelve months were billable calls. What we're looking at probably is an additional eight hundred and fifty calls that could be billed for these types of services. I gave you, on the second page of pie chart, was just a little breakdown of all the different types of calls that we have over the last twelve months and the totals. So, we're right around fifty-five hundred calls altogether. But you can see the bottom four are the ones where we actually transported, we billed for. And then, there's many other options. So what I'm really looking at, and then the final pages are summary from MCA for the last year, monthly breakdown of all the types of billing, what was what they brought in, if they had to write anything off, adjustments to insurances because they're contract agreements, so they would have to reduce rates. So that's there for your information. And really, I, I'm looking for guidance as to we, do we want to do this? We don't, we don't send patients to collections currently. Some agencies do. And so, basically, they, they, as far as the insurance companies, they may send the patient a bill, but they won't, won't get sent to collections for it. So, we're looking for revenue mostly from the insurance companies, Medicaid, only Medicare if the legislation changes it. Could, it's hard to, to really estimate what we would bring in. It could be fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional funding for us for a year. But really, I want to make sure we want to do that and move forward with that and not just assume then, I want to go ahead and do it.
So, yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So, they actually call nine-one-one for an ambulance to come? Or the non-emergency number, well, I guess that's transport, but you go and you treat, but you don't actually transport them to a facility?
Yeah, we evaluate them, we may or may not use supplies on them.
Right.
But we've put hands on them and checked them out. And, I mean, of course, we have the calls where the patient adamantly is like, I don't need evaluated, I don't want to be seen. Those would not apply because we did not assess them. So this requires an assessment. The, the EMT or the paramedic checks the patient, their vitals to some extent. And whatever assistance we render that they need, and then they choose not to go to the hospital.
But we're still basically deploying an ambulance.
Yes, the ambulance, the dispatch, the cruiser has been seen and may or may not be using supplies, of course, it's fuel mileage and all this, yeah.
Yeah, I think there ought to be something to recuperate the cost, particularly if you're calling an emergency number for an ambulance to come out.
Yeah.
And then, whether you go or not, we still have the cost of
Right.
Taking that transport out, burning the fuel, using the supplies.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
So, yeah, really just looking for, I guess, permission to make sure I tell MCA that it's okay that we can.
Move a motion to, so we have it very clear on the record for that?
Oh, so, I guess, let me clarify what, do you have a motion on here?
No.
No, I did not.
Let me look at, yeah, let me ring it. So, I'm going to authorize ESA to bill for emergency services for the dispatch of emergency services and, and treatment. Can you correct me if I need to add anything?
Treated but not transported.
For patients that are treated but not necessarily transported or refused transport.
Yes.
And, or we could make it.
I mean, if they call nine-one-one and request an ambulance, yes.
Well, that's what I mean. All emergency calls that they respond to, whether the patient is transported or not, they can bill.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, anything that's billable, we have to literally, we have to assess the patient and make a documented chart that we have done something other than just, I'm Mr. Jones, do you want us to check you out? Do you want to go to the hospital? And if they're hands off, then we can't bill for that because there's no rec, no assessment in the record.
I know, I apologize, Commissioner Jackson, you stated a motion and I.
I guess.
Yeah, with another one, so.
But, I mean, I think yours was encompassing of that. I just, did you get it, sir? I was just waiting for the video.
I hope somebody wrote it down.
Okay, so, so just reiterate, the motion is to allow service that, but with no transfer, they, they service a patient with no, that they're not transporting.
If they refuse transport.
Or refuse transport. Okay, and I'll say, I'll be happy to second that.
Yeah, okay.
Any discussion? I think we covered it.
No, I, I do have a question. Is this going to hinder anybody called from calling? Do you think that that might deter somebody from calling for help if they need it and they don't have the money to pay?
I can't really speak on behalf, I mean, we don't, like I said, we don't send patients to collections, so, you know, if they get a bill, they're not forced into paying. And we're generally pretty upfront with the patient. They do ask a lot of times, do, do, will I get a bill for this?
Yeah.
And, you know, we are absolutely upfront with them, you know, we bill for transport and, you know, this would be a change in service. So my, my providers would have to make sure that they inform them properly that, you know, if we check you out and we do anything for you, there may be a small bill. But it mainly goes to the insurance, so.
Well, if the providers are out on that, whether they're transported or not from the services, that's two, that's providers that are out of service for.
That's true. Okay, thank you. I just didn't want anybody to feel afraid to call.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Bessie, I will put you on the spot a second. We, we, we didn't take action on Laura Coon's agenda item number seven. Do you know where we could take that fifty thousand dollars from, that to request for change, coal severance? Okay. Okay. There you go. It's, it's, it's a, it is a, a form of POS for sure.
Which was used during World War II, so.
Does the commission mind if we go back and take care of that now that we have guidance on where to move that from?
Can we, since we tabled it? Can we take actions since we tabled it?
We did officially table it. We, we just said the consensus was to bring back where we're going to.
I think we tabled it, but the beauty of tabling it without a date is that you can take it off the table anytime you want.
There you go.
I think that's correct, yeah.
So, I'm sorry.
I think you can do it.
Okay, that's what I thought too. Okay, now we have guidance. So I want to move back to agenda item number seven to, now that we have guidance on that, I'll move to.
You're going to move to take it from the table, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
You're going to move to take it from the table.
I'll, I'll move, I'll move to take the agenda item number seven from the original table.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries five zero. I will move to approve the transfer of fifty thousand dollars to the vehicle fuel line. Zero, 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 one, seven, one, seven, four, three, four, three, zero, one, and this will come from the coal severance count.
Second.
Any discussion?
How much is in coal severance, Ms. Bessie? I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
It's on your budget levy.
I do not have a, a date on that, but I do have two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars that, I don't know if it was available, but I also.
Okay, thank you. Is this it here, total coal severance three ninety-eight, one eighty-five?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I said, is this it here, total coal severance three ninety-eight, one? Oh, okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries five zero. I'm sure you'll let Laura know that we took care of that. I know she probably went home. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move to agenda item number ten, Nate Cochran.
Commissioner Stolifer, I don't believe that I have any action items from that issue.
Thank you, all right.
I have a question. In our minutes, it does say here, when the magistrate Cesare, is that how you pronounce her name? It says here, when she came to talk about the, the space that they need, it does say Assistant Prosecuting Attorney Nathan Cochran to provide a summary at the next meeting. Do you have that for us?
I do not, and I've been unable to do that so far. I will bring it to the next meeting, for sure.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number eleven, approval. We've already did the approval of budget. Anything else we need, I think there's anything else we need to add to that. So we're going to move on to.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I apologize, you moved very quickly. I wasn't, I did have a question about the minor boundary issue. Do you have any update on that for us?
If, if we deal with that issue, I will probably have to go into executive session because of potential litigation issues. I would say generally, there have been a couple of fact inquiries, but that's basically all that has happened so far. The, the most significant issue that we dealt with at this point was the voting issue, and that's been taken care of.
That's been taken care of, that's what I was going to ask you, okay.
So we will progress with other issues as, as we go along through the year.
Well, it's interesting that our, our interim county administrator knows what's happening, but I don't. You know, I'm just curious.
All right, well, if you want to go into executive session, I can tell you that pretty much this is, this is about what I said is, is pretty much the extent of what has happened since the last meeting. But I would be happy if you wanted to go into executive session to answer questions that you may have.
I mean, I do have some questions and I do apologize for the, for the inconvenience to the public, but I do have some questions I think are relevant.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think if a commissioner has questions on these issues, we should move into executive session and this should be asked.
Somebody wants to move a motion to go into exec session, happy to.
I make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss the, or was it, discussion of minor boundary issue between Berkeley and Jefferson County.
To receive legal advice.
To receive legal advice.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries five zero. We're going to move into executive session.
Thank you.